I'd like to call to order the August 17th, 2021 Board of Education Regular Meeting at 7:00 PM. Sarah, good evening to you, and can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bararty, Mrs. Deck? Here. Mrs. Lala? Here. Mr. Mazano?
Here.
Mr. Monson?
Here.
Mr. Palazzo?
Here.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Here.
And we'll make note that Board Member Bararty did reach out to me. He is out of the state for work purposes, and that's why he's not here tonight. Although, we do have a court. Please stand for the pledge.
(Inaudible)
Chris, can you take the mission statement, please?
The Mission of North School District 80 is inspiring educational excellence in a nurturing environment.
Alright, thank you. Next couple of minutes will take for to celebrate some success that's been happening around the district, and I'll kick that off. The building and grounds guys are working hard. They're trying to get this school ready. It will be ready for next week for us to open. If you look outside, there's some new signs. And I want to say thank you to Norwood Park Township for allocating some monies so those signs can be purchased. That money is taxpayer money. Those are your signs, these are your buildings. So, we also thank you, the taxpayer, for allowing that to happen and making that happen. Also, the administration, working hard. Ralph, Michelle, Bob, I know there's been a lot of interviews, and I'm sorry if I missed a name or two that are not in, that I didn't say that I've been interviewing. You're working hard, and great things are happening. Also, I'm gonna let Bob, after we celebrate here a few minutes, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob. We have a lot of new staff here, which we're excited about, so there's a lot of positive things happening here, and we're getting ready to kick this school year off right, so it's great stuff. Anybody else? Okay. Therefore, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Bob Biecki, who is our principal at James Giles School.
(Inaudible) Thank you everyone for coming today. We're excited to have our new staff, and we're able to introduce them to everyone here, to our quarterback, and to our community that is here in attendance. First, I would like to introduce our Assistant Principal at Giles School, Ms. Christine Aaron.
Hi.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome, Christine. And for arts, we have Mr. Michael Glassman. He will be teaching fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade art. And Giles, for the schedule, on its own work is, uh, fifth and sixth will have art for semester for 30 minutes, and then second semester, seventh and eighth grade will have art for 30 minutes. And on the flip side is theme. So, if you're not in theme, you're in art. We'll talk more about that. In, uh, fifth grade, Ms. Mary Connors is our co-teacher for fifth grade studies. Welcome. And in seventh grade for social studies, we have this very good house. So, we're really excited, we're thrilled to have them. Uh, we're still looking, uh, for, uh, an eighth grade spec teacher. So, you know anyone? (Laughter) Uh, we're, uh, and we're finalizing some other positions as well, so we're excited about that. Thank you all, and wish you a great year.
Thank you, Mr. Biecki. So, Mr. Biecki is our principal at Giles, and I want to formally introduce our new principal here at Lee School, Mr. Sean Rebiola, and I'll let him introduce himself also, and the new staff here at Lee.
Alright, hello. It's good to, uh, see everyone here today. Sean Rebiola, lead, uh, principal at Lee. And, uh, just, I've got a quick background, since this is the first time I've seen everyone here. Um, I previously, for the past two years, have been an assistant principal in Edison. And, uh, prior to that, I was the teacher for 10 years in the public administration. I mean, just give me a brief introduction, keep it pretty simple right now, um, because I know there's a lot on our agenda for today. But I do also want to introduce some other new staff members, starting with the assistant principal at Lee, Sarah Nysell. Alright, and we also have Jenna Bartello here, being her first in the team. And also, Maria Verdi, who we are recommending today for a young student. So, and if you all would have a word with me.
Thank you, Sean. I'm not, I'm now gonna turn it over to our interim superintendent, Mr. Ralph Grimm, who's gonna speak a little on the opening of this school year.
Alright, welcome, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. So, uh, as you're all probably pretty much aware, we start back with Teacher Institute next week on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, we are, as you can see, still trying to finalize all of our vacant positions, and we're, we're really making progress, and, uh, we have a week, so we're not worried yet. It's kind of an inside joke, okay, with the administrative team. Uh, our students will return on Wednesday, and they'll have short days Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of next week. And then, uh, we come back the following week, uh, and start out what we hope will be a very normal, as much as possible, school year, so. Administrative team has been working hard, teachers have been in their rooms, or as Mr. Palazzo said, our building and grounds people, maintenance and custodial staff have all done a remarkable job. We're gonna be ready, we're excited, and, uh, really appreciate the opportunity to educate our students again this year, so thank you.
We'll move on to our action item. I'll ask the board to consider the approval of the agenda as presented and/or potentially modified. Any discussion on that? Without discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion made by Molly, seconded by Frank. Sarah, roll call, please.
Mrs. Deck? Yes. Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Motion carries. Again, I'd like to recognize everybody who's here tonight, thank you for coming out. Uh, thank you for being here. Correspondence, there is no correspondence for the board to report to the community tonight. Public participation, we'll check the sheet right now. Alright, I'm being told there is no public participation. I will check with Michelle and Ralph. Any emails come in? Okay. Alright, so we do, we don't have any public questions or participation tonight. FOIA requests, there are no FOIA requests to report from the district's end since last meeting. Administrative reports, I'll turn it again over to, uh, Mr. Ralph Grimm.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Palazzo. So, I just want to update the board on a couple of things that, uh, I think are of interest to you. I'm getting a better handle on the board policy work that needs to be done. Uh, we, I got an email from the Press Policy Service, from the Illinois Association of School Boards. Uh, so we're gonna be really focused on finishing those updates, uh, once we get schools started. We are scheduled for a West 40 Intermediate Service Center Annual Health, Life, Safety Compliance Visit on September 28th. This is an annual inspection that the Intermediate Service Center does of our buildings. Um, they have sent us a preliminary list of documents and materials that they would like for us to collect. We are in the process of, of putting all that together so they can look at it when they are here visiting. Uh, the next thing, the, uh, Leyden Norwood Athletic Conference has hired a new director. Uh, he is Matt Jesky, and he takes over for our very own Mr. Biecki. Uh, Mr. Biecki will be providing some assistance to the new director on an as-needed basis for the next several months, so that we have a smooth transition to the new director, and so that our, our sports team gets started off on the right foot. I do also want to let the board and those in attendance know that the conference, uh, primarily the superintendents of the conference, have indicated that they will enact a policy that unvaccinated coaches and umpires and officials must wear a mask while participating in conference events, even if that event is outside. Um, that's just for, uh, unvaccinated coaches and umpires and officials. Our principals and our new assistant principals met yesterday with Patrick Gerly, uh, who is the consultant that we have secured, we've hired to serve as a mentor and coach to, uh, our new administrators. We talked about that session today, and I think it went really well, and the team is scheduled to meet again with Mr. Gerly twice per month, once live and once via Zoom. Really looking forward to those conversations, and helping our new administrators get started on a positive note. And I also really want to thank, uh, everyone in the district, our maintenance staff, custodial staff, secretaries, Kimmy Duvore, our entire administrative team, for all their work over the last several weeks, getting buildings ready for school, getting all of our systems up and running, getting our registration process underway, and, and I'm happy to report, we, it appears we have several new students up to the district this year, so we're really excited about that. It's been a huge task, and, uh, everybody pulled together to get it done, and so I think we're gonna be as ready as we can be for our staff to return on Monday and our students to return on Wednesday. That concludes my report.
Okay, Ralph, does the board have any questions or comments for Ralph? Alright, Ralph, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to our building monthly reports, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Biecki first.
So, as a district, uh, we welcomed our teachers with a three-day new teacher orientation that went very well. And so, we were able to learn about all about our new teachers, and we were attending to them all about North School District 80, so that was very successful. I am on Twitter, so if anyone likes to follow me, it's @BBFDD80. So, you can find mine on Twitter, and I'll be posting a lot of happenings that's going on at Giles School. I would like to take this time, as Mr. Palazzo said, and thank his own, uh, township for their new digital display board, responding to it, and also at Giles, uh, their great enhancements to our building for communication purposes for everyone. So, thank you very much. We'd also, I'd also like to thank our theme teacher, Ms. Kneber Creppis, and our art teacher at Lee School, Ms. Denise Muscarolo, for painting the Giles School Line logo. As you enter entrance to at Giles School, you will see the logo, it is, it is bright and sharp, and it is a great new addition to Giles School, and I'm excited that there's more to come as we get out through the year, and, and so, we're excited about that. Uh, we are, uh, I recently, I took a course, and recently was certified as a CPI instructor with special emphasis on autism spectrum disorder. So, I will be training the entire district on, uh, this de-escalation techniques, uh, from both Lee and Giles School. Upcoming events, supply drop-off is Tuesday, August 24th, uh, at 5:15 to 6:45. That'll take place, uh, at Giles School for our older students, and then also at Lee School for our younger students. Uh, teachers will be in their classrooms to greet students. You may drop off supplies in that classroom. You'll also, at Giles, a student will receive their schedule, and they'll be able to follow their schedule and go throughout, uh, all their, their classrooms. So, that will be great. Also, the, uh, myself and our assistant principal, we will be in the front by our digital display board. We will have postables, that is where the, uh, the, uh, schedules will be. And also, those interested, and, uh, we encourage everyone to sign up for our PBIS report. And if you sign up Tuesday, your student will earn 100, 100 points in PBIS. So, please take advantage of that, and please sign up for our PBIS program. So, that's what's happening at Giles, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biecki. I'll turn it over now to Mr. Rebiola for Lee.
Alright, so, uh, similar to what we've heard this morning, I go, uh, you know, thank you for, uh, the Norwood Park Township for their digital boards. They are really awesome, we can update them after I leave, which is really pretty cool. Uh, as you can see, there's been a few different, uh, different products ongoing within the summer here at Lee, including the secure entrance, gym doors, updates to the teachers lounge, and I'm sure there's, you know, more to that list that's just been happening over the past, uh, two and a half weeks since I've been here. So, uh, it's been busy, uh, but things are really starting to come together, and it's, uh, we're really excited about that. Uh, we've been conducting a lot of interviews recently for kindergarten, we're looking for a school nurse, and also for a professional. We are still, um, looking to hire for a professional position, so just kind of spread that word and put that out there. Uh, also, last Thursday, um, we hosted a meeting break for the Lee staff, uh, just so we can kind of get to know one another. Uh, so we had a, you know, a little, uh, breakfast in tighter territory and just got to, uh, got to meet one another. Like, uh, Mr. Biecki said, supply drop-off Tuesday, 24th, that's 5:15 to, uh, 6:45. We will have, uh, classroom assignments available at that time, also a timed weekly teacher, drop-off supplies, and of course, a postable with the principals. That's definitely a good one. Alright, uh, we like to, uh, deliver each other. Alright, so, uh, as, uh, Mr. Grimm had mentioned, we had a chance to, uh, work with, uh, Gerly. We'll be providing some mentoring and support. Uh, that was really great, we had some awesome discussions, and set up a plan for our ongoing continuation of our meetings. And truly, I'm grateful for, uh, that support being offered to, uh, all of us affiliate teachers. Uh, so, um, also, next week, we have teachers coming back on Monday, so we have been working on planning out those institute days and the, uh, school improvement days, so a lot of planning and preparation to, uh, get the year started. And, uh, I think we're, we're ready to get to the ground, so, thank you for the tip.
Thank you, Mr. Rebiola. Moving on to our special education report, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dor.
Um, so, you know, one way we also did this month, and I didn't talk about last month, is an administrative team retreat as well. And one of the things I'm really excited about is working with just the new staff and also our new administration, really going towards the collective vision of the whole mean goal, and really supporting all students, uh, in, in North School District. Uh, I, our staff have been in the building so much, it has been, you know, impressive, and it's been nice to see staff back in the building. Uh, one of the things that I'm continuously doing for the board and for the school, making sure we're compliant, and I have some changes. There's some additional, uh, notification changes that have been added to the IP assessment for our tons. There's the Department of Human Services and Department of Parents and Resources that are available. Outside of the school set, that can help students with exceptionalities, get the need, get children with exceptionalities, get the needs, that's something that we're gonna be talking a lot about the year. Also, looking at some policy and procedural changes that we need to add into our board policy and our student handbook, a lot of things like that. Uh, at this point, we're just really proud of the fact that, knock on wood, staffing's been a challenge across the entire state of Illinois, across districts. And right now, every student who needs support, we've got students who need nurses, who need additional, we have those supports in place so that there will be no students left out coming to the first day of school without being supported, and that is something that keeps me up at night. Um, uh, and I just appreciate the fact that while in this time, a lot of school districts are in survival mode, this school board and this school district and this team has really focused on not only surviving, but also thriving and growing. And next week, it goes into that co-teaching initiative that we, we talked about all the time, and I'm just really excited to get off the part, I don't know, part C, I don't know where we're on the iteration with the new stuff, and that's gonna be very great. We're doing a district-wide professional development of Tuesday for relationship collaboration and co-teaching. So, um, this board and this school district has, you know, really kind of invested a lot of special education and the fact that we're going to be a steward of that, and hopefully continue with that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dor. Mrs. Guzic?
Great, thank you. Um, I provided for you the staffing plan for the beginning of the year. As mentioned, we're still looking for a seventh, uh, eighth grade, or the eighth grade support case to ensure that Giles, or, you know, a couple of plans in place, but we're really hoping to secure someone by next Wednesday. We are also, uh, still forcing for additional bilingual teacher and, um, additional parents, as mentioned, by my colleagues. This evening, we are asking to approve a few additional positions. One that we've talked about a few times, uh, possibility, and that was a kindergarten position. We do have 95 kindergartners, so these seven of them are full day. Uh, so, that's averaging about 20 kids in classrooms. We are looking at a fourth kindergarten, uh, full day teacher, uh, on the agenda tonight. We also have a Spanish teacher for Giles that we have been looking for for a while, and we're really excited about. She's not here this evening, she's come back from a trip, she'll be joining us soon. We have a temporary maintenance position on the agenda tonight. We'd like to move forward with additional specera and, um, our admin assistant for the position that was vacated earlier this month. Also, you will notice on the agenda tonight are two contract nurses. A few months ago, we spoke a few about hiring our own nurses, and that was our intent. Uh, we did hire one for the Lee School Nurse Office, however, we, we were not able to find a candidate to move forward in the other two positions. Um, so we are looking at contracting those at this point. Those contracts are, uh, can be ended with a 30-day notice, and either case, there are two different companies. One would be for the Giles office, and then the other one would be for a one-to-one nurse for a student, um, that had that need. Any questions about this evening or this evening?
Just on the nursing, Michelle. So, there'll be a nurse in Lee, Giles, and then there'll be one that's one-to-one, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Michelle, we thank you. Board committee time, uh, board policy and development. We, I don't, we don't have anything to report on that. Building and grounds.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on, uh, something going on, and what is later in the agenda, Ash and I have fourteen to meet. So, as I said, due to, uh, really good building and grounds leadership, we see a lot of things improving. Um, a lot of these, uh, management or life safety reports, some of it was long-standing items to do that had been around for a long time and have been addressed, something about that. Uh, so, there is a lot to do yet, and there is a plan for that, but what is later on in the agenda, as I mentioned, is a plan, basically, a plan to allow our architects to come up with specifications for what is going to be a very comprehensive, multi-year project plumbing. And the face of two schools, you can imagine, they have just, uh, the pipe, drains, the size of bathrooms. A lot goes into it, but, um, we knew this was coming, but it's probably one of the biggest parts of our life-saving study, and, uh, it's actually kind of exciting to remove ahead of it, because, uh, once this is addressed, the school will be a much better place in a couple of years, from its own.
Board, have any questions for B and G? Okay, thanks, Frank. Communications.
Is it September 6th? September 6th? We have our first meeting September 6th?
6th or 2nd?
Oh.
Can I look at my phone?
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, September 2nd? Okay, at 7:00, 7:00 PM.
7:00, okay.
September 6th?
I'm sorry?
The 2nd is a Thursday, and the 6th is a Monday?
No, so it's the 2nd. Yeah, 2nd.
Finance.
So, last week, we had a meeting to discuss, um, what is going to be, just to run it on tonight, and albeit, it, it's a good budget, and I'm pretty excited that we're still able to balance. We're good.
Okay, board, have any questions for finance? Thank you, Molly. Uh, negotiations, what I can tell the public is this is the final year of the negotiated, of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement. We are entering a negotiating year. Uh, those discussions have not started yet. Uh, we anticipate those to start sometime in the near future. That's the report from negotiations. Education? Do we have anything to report? Parent advisory? No report on that. Behavioral Intervention Committee? And Norwood Park District?
Uh, we're putting, uh, we're trying to put something on, something on the calendar next week to, uh, to give with them. Just checking dates now.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'm gonna ask the board to consider approval for the consent agenda. A little discussion piece I'd like to say now is, um, we've got a little bit bigger crowd, more than normal, and I expect that to be for action item 14 Hs in Henry. Consider approval for district return to learn. Once we get to that spot on the agenda at that item, interim superintendent Grimm will go into detail on that topic. Any other comments or questions on the board, from the board? Okay, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mode. Motion made by Lou, seconded by Chris. Sarah, roll call, please.
Mr. Mazano?
Yep.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Okay, that motion does carry. We'll move on to action items. I'll ask the board to consider the approval of the tentative fiscal year '22 North School District 80 budget. Discussion? Without discussion, I'll ask for approval, to approve the tentative fiscal year '22 North School District 80 budget.
Motion.
Second.
Molly, seconded by Maria.
Craig is here.
Craig, you have any, any comments?
No, we had a good finance committee meeting, went over the budget. Um, it's $15,000 different from the first building, so it's almost nothing. So, what we saw already is just the detail. We're in good shape at this point.
Great. So, for those of you that don't know, that's Dr. Craig Schilling. He is District 80's financial consultant. He overlooks the budget, and, uh, he does the numbers. He says we're in good shape. So, thank you, Craig. Any other questions or comments from the board? I'll ask for a motion to approve the tentative fiscal year '22 North School District 80 budget.
Yeah.
Sarah, roll call.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Motion carries. I ask the board to consider approval of district architect to begin design work on required health, life, safety, and plumbing work for North School District 80 for the summer of 2022.
Motion.
Lou, seconded by Frank. Craig, you have any comments on that?
There are just two pieces, uh, one is the plumbing, the other is the miscellaneous life safety.
Yeah.
And what they're going to do there is take all the miscellaneous items, and then get permitable plans that we can take to the, uh, for approval, and then we can do it any way we want. So, if it's south solar, so we can do it ourselves, we'll just do it how we want.
Thank you, Craig. I'm gonna ask for it, Sarah, just to be more formal. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the district architect to begin work on required health, life, safety, and plumbing work for North School District 80 for the summer of 2022. Motion made by Lou, seconded by Frank. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'll ask the board to consider approval of a loan from working cash fund to the education fund. Craig, you want to comment on that for us?
I'll, I'll just quickly comment on both loans, okay, because there's two motions there.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, everybody, I think, knows that property tax receipts are late.
Let me just mention the next one that I'm gonna ask for. I just, I want to make note, because Craig's gonna talk about them both. I'll formally ask for the approval of it, but it's going to be, the next one I'm gonna ask for is for the working cash fund to the IMRF Social Security Fund.
So, we have, um, because taxes won't be due until October 1st, um, basically, property taxes are the largest revenue source, and typically, we last from August 1st to February, March 1st, February. And right now, we're running the short, $1.5 million in And right now, we're running the short, one point five million dollars in our education fund, and a hundred thousand dollars in our IMRF Social Security Fund. The good thing is, because we've gotten ourselves into good financial state from the deficit we got, should think, many years, a number of years ago, we have sufficient funds in working cash we can borrow internally. So this is a non-interest loan. Just from our judiciary fund, to each of those funds, when the tax receipts come in, we have to repay that money back to those funds. And, you know, if you think about it, we're going to have taxes coming in October, and turn right around, and have them come in, you know, just a few months later. So that's why we're doing it.
Okay, thank you, Craig. Board have any questions for Craig? So I asked for a motion to approve the loan from working cash to the education fund.
Motion. Second.
Okay, motion made by Chris, seconded by Molly. Sarah, roll call, please.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes. Motion carries. As just discussed, I'll ask the board to consider the approval of a loan from the working cash fund to the IMRF Social Security Fund. Any discussion? Okay, now I'll ask the board for a motion to approve the loan from working cash fund to the IMRF Social Security Fund.
Motion.
I heard Molly first, seconded by Chris. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll ask the board to consider approval of the district three-year facilities plan. Any comments or discussion from anybody on that? With no comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the district three-year facilities plan.
Motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Chris. Sarah, roll call.
Mrs. Lala?
Yeah.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, and you can find it under action item fourteen F as in Frank on your paperwork, it's the consider the approval of facilities use agreement with Norwich Youth Association, also known as N.Y.A. I'm going to table that. And the reason for, the reason for that is we don't have the proper paperwork into the district yet. So when we get the paperwork, we'll put it back on the agenda for next meeting. That one's tabled for tonight. Moving on to the next action item, I'll ask the board to consider the approval of the request to apply for fiscal year twenty-two, round one of the school maintenance grant.
So this is a grant program put out by the state board, and it allows each public school district in the state to apply for a fifty thousand dollar grant that would deal with some type of facilities issues primarily overall. This is a matching grant, so we have to demonstrate our ability to match that fifty thousand dollars. And with all the work that we're doing, matching the grant will be absolutely no problem whatsoever. This is a fairly easy grant to apply for, but we do need board permission so that we can note that in the paperwork. And that's what we're asking for tonight.
Our approval tonight's a formality of you moving forward, correct?
Yes, we need to have the board's permission in the grant application.
Understood. Any other questions or comments for Ralph? I'll ask for a motion to approve the request to apply for the fiscal year twenty-two, round one, school maintenance grant.
Second.
Chris, seconded by Frank. Roll call.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mazano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll ask the board to consider the approval of the district's return to learn plan. Here's where I'll turn it over to Mr. Grimm for discussion and board questions and comments.
All right, so in your material, I sent you, actually, last night, I sent you the next draft of our return to learn plan. And I just want to talk about a couple of things, and then be happy to answer any questions that you have. So I think we want to start with reminding everyone that on July ninth, our state superintendent, Dr. Carmen Ayala, essentially said that, beginning with the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, all schools must resume fully in-person learning for all student attendance days, provided that pursuant to a couple of statutes, remote instruction be made available for students who have not received a COVID-19 vaccine, or who are not eligible for a COVID-19 vaccination, only while they are under quarantine, consistent with guidance or requirements from a local public health department or the Illinois Department of Public Health. So this gave us pause to look at, what does that really mean if we're going to come back full-time, have students here all day, every day? While we were working on that and what that meant, recognizing that from that day on, we were receiving updates on guidance from the Center for Disease Control, Illinois Department of Public Health, Cook County Department of Public Health, and the Illinois State Board of Education, that in a couple of those days, the guidance changed from morning to the afternoon. And then on Wednesday, August fourth, Governor Pritzker issued Executive Order twenty-twenty-one dash eighteen that requires that masks be worn indoors by all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to P-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. The state of Illinois also requires all public and non-public schools to comply with contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine as directed by state and local public health departments. In addition to the masking requirement, the executive order outlines several other mitigation strategies that we are to plan and prepare for. Those include things like promoting and/or providing COVID-19 immunization for all eligible staff and students. Facilitate physical distancing. Schools should configure their spaces to provide space for physical distancing to the extent possible. Implement or provide provisions for testing, for diagnostic testing for suspected cases, close contacts, enduring outbreaks, as well as screening, testing for unvaccinated staff and students according to the CDC's testing recommendations. Improving ventilation to reduce concentration of potentially virus-containing droplets in schools' indoor air environments. Promoting and here-to-hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette. Encourage individuals who are sick to stay home and get tested for COVID-19, and clean and disinfect surfaces to maintain healthy environments. So essentially, the question at that time was, all right, so if schools have the option, what does that look like? And the direction that we were going prior to the governor's executive order was, if we were going to be mask optional or mask recommended, at what level do we raise the other mitigation strategies in order to provide the safest environment possible for our students and staff, and still fall within these guidelines in this approximately twenty-five-page guidance document that we received from the Illinois Department of Public Health in ISBE? The governor's executive order changed our thinking significantly. We have had conversations at the board level at a special meeting on August ninth regarding what this might look like under the governor's executive order. We convened two community meetings with some stakeholders and talked about what this would look like. The first meeting, we talked about what the guidance was calling for, which I believe happened before the governor's executive order. And then we came back the next week after the governor had issued his executive order on the fourth, and met with essentially the same group, maybe one or two people less, and talked about our thoughts about going forward implementing the governor's mandate. And so what I'm going to be asking you to affirm tonight is that we will follow the governor's mandate and require masking of all of our students, staff, faculty, and visitors to the building while they are indoors until such time as the governor either modifies the executive order or allows it to end. The rest of the documents that I provided you last night talks about some of the other mitigation strategies that we will be working to implement in terms of contact tracing for close contact. We are going to continue talking about testing suspected cases based on close contacts. Although tonight, I am not ready to have that firm recommendation for you. We are going to be talking with our district nurse tomorrow about what this might look like. We are going to really monitor our social distancing and try and maintain that three feet of social distance requirement that's outlined in the governor's executive order. We will promote, to the extent possible, the idea of vaccinations, making sure that we indicate that it is a parental choice. We are not in a place where we can mandate vaccinations. And if we have the opportunity, the guidance does speak to promoting things like vaccination clinics if they're in an area, being cooperative with the health department. If they wish to bring a vaccination clinic on site, we would certainly want to look at doing those kinds of things as well. There's a lot to digest in the guidance. Frankly, we are still trying to figure out exactly what our responsibilities will be regarding quarantining students or staff after a close contact. We want our students to be in school every day, all day. We want our staff to be in school every day and all day. And so as we continue to move forward, we think that it's best to do so in a manner where everyone is masked. Now, some may wonder a couple of things relative to the governor's executive order. And I will just tell you that the governor has been challenged sixty-nine times on whether or not he has the authority to issue these types of executive orders, and do they carry the weight and status of law? And what I can tell you is, the courts have upheld the governor's issuance of executive orders in sixty-nine challenges that have come before courts throughout Illinois. That's sixty-nine out of sixty-nine. He's not yet lost when someone has challenged his ability to issue an executive order. And folks, I'm not here to tell you whether he's right or wrong. I'm just here to tell you what is commonly believed to be fact. There are certain risks, as we have discussed at a previous meeting, should you choose not to follow the executive order. And the risks, quite frankly, are substantial. And it's probably the primary reason why I'm suggesting to you that you follow the governor's executive order. First, the district could lose its recognition status from the state board. They do have the legal authority to do that. I received a note from the state superintendent today, all superintendents did, reemphasizing, I assume, their belief in the power to withdraw recognition status. Probably the case that got the most attention in the news was, last week, the state board of education pulled the recognition status for Timothy Christian, a private school. They are no longer recognized as a Illinois State Board of Education school, which carries with it substantial consequences. Students cannot participate in IHSA or IESA activities. They risk their federal and state funding and some other things. Since then, two other schools, private schools, were, had their recognition status pulled. It went to non-recognized. Those two schools had second thoughts. They informed the state board that they would follow the mandate for masking, and ISBE reinstated their recognition status. Those are the private schools. Since last week, twenty-nine public school districts announced that they were not going to follow the mandate. ISBE contacted them, placed them on probation immediately, which is one step above losing complete recognition. Two reversed course and said, okay, we will follow the mandate. So there are, right now, twenty-seven public school districts that ISBE has identified as not following the mask mandate. They are on probation. They have about sixty days to rethink their position and possibly change their course, or ISBE has the authority to drop their recognition status. So I've mentioned a couple of things relative to what happens if we're not recognized. Federal and state funding could be in jeopardy. We commonly refer to that as our federal grants, our title grants, and a couple of others. Our federal evidence-based funding, which is our general state aid, if you will. The general state aid, or what we call evidence-based funding, it says in the statute, Senate Bill fourteen ninety-seven, I believe, that EBF funding cannot be given to a non-recognized school district. And for us, that would be approximately a million dollars, I believe? One point one million dollars. There would be no opportunity for our students to participate in IESA sanctioned events. Civil damages to school districts can be levied, and those would be paid for by local taxpayers, because in all likelihood, if something were to happen and the district was sued, we would not have our blanket general liability insurance coverage, because the district will not cover you when you aren't compliant. And so any damages that would be awarded to a plaintiff would have to come from our local sources, which means, in all likelihood, local property taxpayers. And then for those of you sitting up here around this table, there is potential personal and professional liability, which means that you would pay for damages from your own resources if you were deemed to have acted in a willful or wanton way with regard to the law, or if you were deemed to not act as a reasonably prudent person would do. And these are all, both of these are tenants under the Tort Immunity Protection Act. And if you do those things, if you do things that a reasonably prudent person wouldn't do, or act with willful and wanton disregard for the law, then you have what they call pierced the Tort Immunity Protection. And so there would really be no protection for the decision-makers. And so you could possibly be putting your personal assets at risk. Now, having said all that, I'll be happy to go into other parts of what we're considering our plan. I would be remiss if I didn't talk just briefly about, you know, that's all the bad stuff. What can we do if our students come back in a masked situation and our staff are masked? I think we remember last year, you know, students didn't go to the cafeteria for lunch. They were very regimented when they walked in the hallway, if they were allowed to leave their classroom. They sat in their student desk for the majority of the day. There was very little movement, very little social There was very little movement, very little social interaction. It was pretty tough. Undoubtedly, it was pretty tough. If we bring our students back and our staff back in masks, then I believe that based on our read of the guidance and the many conversations that Mrs. Guzic and I and some of the administrators have listened in on, we have a little bit more freedom in the classroom. We talked today at our administrators' meeting about returning tables to the classroom. So then maybe we can't put four or five students at a table for a guided reading group or an activity. Maybe we can put two or three students together and have them maintain that three-foot social distance, which by the way, is, you know, a yardstick. And it's from one student's head to the other student's head. So we think there's some possibilities for some of those kinds of activities. Putting students' desks together perhaps is another option that we would have. We are going to put rugs back in the classroom so that the students can have time and do some of those activities that they have done before. So we are going to explore as many of those kinds of activities as we can and provide those opportunities for our students. And we can do that because our students and our staff will be in masks. And so the requirement of being unmasked, maintaining a six-foot social distance at all times, limiting movement, being more regimented in the contact tracing, the quarantining, and so on and so forth, I think, at least I hope people will agree, is a kind of a decent trade-off for wearing the mask. So with that, I think, I'll ask Mrs. Guzic if she wants to add anything because we've been working very closely on this, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Yeah, I think that you said it well. And I think what we do want to celebrate, as Mr. Graham mentioned, are the things that we can do. And we do have some plans in place to send out information to our families in order to see the good in what we have going on and the good we have masking and staying three feet apart. Three feet apart isn't that far away, where we couldn't still be able to have students gather and listen to a story on the rug or work in collaborative groups with the mask government. That is something that our next step of what we'll be working on to push out a campaign to our families.
And we will put this document, as it is, not totally complete, on the webpage tomorrow. Be happy to share it with anyone who wants to see it after the meeting, or certainly we'll make it available to anyone who would like to look at it tomorrow. So are there any questions?
I have a couple of comments, but I'll put them up the floor before me if anybody else has anything. So Ralph, a couple of questions, I did have a couple of comments I wanted to bring up. You touched on them. The information piece that we got in our board book is what you just mentioned. So it's really well put together, not only putting it on the website. I would ask if we can send this out to our parents as well.
Yes, we can do that, absolutely. We'll push it out.
Because it's broken down, you know, the dates and when certain orders came out per compiled statutes per Illinois and things like that. So I wanted to ask that, if you can go out individually, because us as a voice for the community, getting this info out as soon as possible, kind of helping understanding the decision that was made and the recommendation from the administration to the decision the board eventually makes. The comment I wanted to make, and you touched on it a little bit, two comments. The first one I want to make is when this order gets modified or it gets lifted from the governor's office, and if the board disagrees, I think it's in this board's best interest to reconvene shortly after that and break down the scenario again. So I like the administration, like you've been doing since day one, to stay on top of that. And as soon as, if it gets modified or lifted, the board will have discussions on how to move forward from there. You touched on lunch a little bit. So going back to school with masks, does that mean the kids go back, the children go back into the lunchroom and they'll be able to walk through the hall to or from their room?
That's our plan.
Is that, okay.
Yes.
All right.
And we're going to try as hard as we can to keep them socially distanced, but we know that they're going to be, at times, that's going to be difficult to do. And we're going to recognize that our students are doing the best that they can, that our staff is doing the best that they can, and we'll be okay with that.
All right. Any other, anybody else? All right. So Ralph, we thank you. I think that was well presented. And I know there's been a ton of work. And I'm glad you mentioned that there's the return to learn committee that was put together. There was two meetings, Maria and Frank. I know you both sat in on those meetings with, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank or Maria, with faculty and staff, community members, parents. There were two of those meetings. The district attorney, Karia Bocek, was contacted multiple times and a lot of discussions there. Ralph and Michelle and everybody else involved really did homework on this and presented it really well tonight. So I thank everybody for their hard work. It's a trying time. It's tough. There's a lot going on. And, you know, I hear it a lot that we want the kids to return to school as normal as possible. So do I. I have three kids that go here. So do I. And, you know, sometimes things are put in place, whether you agree with them or not, it's the rule coming from above, so we can have a better option of making decisions than we're at right now. So I thank everybody who put the time and the work in. It's a lot of work. I'm going to ask for a motion from the board to approve the district's return to learn plan.
Motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Molly. Sarah, roll call.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Can I say one more? I know this may not be what some people want, but I want to say this, and it comes truly from my heart. Part of my part-time job in my retirement is I coach and mentor early-career superintendents. And I've had multiple calls in the last 10 days from superintendents who have a board meeting like this where members of the audience are yelling, and they're screaming, they're calling the board members' names, they're threatening them. I just want to say thank you to all of you for how well you've conducted yourself tonight. It speaks very highly of this community, and I just want you to know how much I truly, truly appreciate that. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm happy to talk to you about any other detail about this plan, but I just want to say thank you for the way you have handled this situation over the last several weeks. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you for those words, Ralph. So now is the time for any board comments in general. Okay, without any further comments from the board, I will ask the board to consider a motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and to review closed session minutes. Any discussion? I'll ask for the motion to adjourn the closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and to review closed session minutes.
Motion.
Frank, seconded by Maria. Roll call, Sarah.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. We're going to be out of open session. Note the time, 7:59. In closed session, 8:05, please. All right, so now we're back in open session. The time is 8:42 PM. Moving on to personnel, action items. I'd ask the board to consider the approval of contract for Sarah Mizel, assistant principal at lead school. Any discussion? Without discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the contract of Sarah Mizel, assistant principal at lead school.
No motion.
Who motion?
Me.
Sorry. Maria, seconded by Chris. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I'd ask the board to consider approval of the employment of Ideline Peters, building administrative assistant. Any discussion on that? I'll ask for a motion to approve the employment of Ideline Peters, building administrative assistant.
Motion.
Motion made by Molly, seconded by Chris. Roll call, Sarah.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ask the board to consider approval of the employment of Mary Murphy, district kindergarten teacher. Discussion? Ask for a motion to approve the employment of Mary Murphy, district kindergarten teacher.
A motion.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Molly.
It's a correction. My name is Marie.
What did I say?
Marie Mary.
Marie. Thank you. Marie. Okay. Sarah, roll call, please.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next action item is going to fall under 18D as in David, and that's going to be the consider the approval of a district special education teacher. We're not ready for that. That's going to be tabled for tonight. Moving on to 18E. I'll ask the board to consider approval of the employment of Catrissena?
Rosnick.
Rosnick.
Yep.
Okay. District Spanish teacher. Any discussion? I ask for a motion to approve the employment of Catrissena Rosnick as the district Spanish teacher.
Okay.
Motion made by Frank, seconded by Maria. Roll call, Sarah.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of the contract with Row Health for nursing services. Any discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve the contract with Row Health for nursing services.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Lou, seconded by Chris. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ask the board to consider the approval of a contract with Career Staff Unlimited for nursing services. Discussion? I'll ask for a motion to approve the contract with Career Staff Unlimited for nursing services.
Motion.
Second.
Frank, seconded by Chris. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll ask the board to consider the approval of the appointment of Derek Sellers as district custodian temporary basis.
A motion.
Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the employment of Derek Sellers as the district custodian, again, temporary basis.
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks. Motion made by Lou, seconded by Maria. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. I'll ask for a little help on this last name. Mrs. Guzic?
Marta Shuknu?
Shuknu. Consider the approval of reassignment of Marta Shuknu, ELL aide at lead school, to maternity lead sub, ELL at lead school, from August 23rd, 2021, to August 12th of 2021. Any discussion? I'll read that again. I'll ask for a motion to approve the reassignment of Marta Shuknu, ELL aide, lead school, to the maternity lead sub at ELL lead school, from August 23rd, 2021, through August 12th of 2021.
Motion.
Molly, seconded by Chris. Roll call, Sarah.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yep.
Motion carries. Our last action item, I'll ask the board to consider the approval of employment of Jason Wiegand as district paraprofessional. Any discussion? I need a motion to approve the employment of Jason Wiegand as the district paraprofessional. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Motion.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Chris, seconded by Maria. Roll call, Sarah.
Mr. Monson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lala?
Yes.
Mrs. Deck?
Yes.
Mr. Mizano?
Yes.
Mr. Palazzo?
Yes.
Mr. Tribuzio?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. This is a great time to reflect on tonight's meeting. So I'm going to pass out these board reflections. Please take your time with them.
Yes.
Frank, you have one?
I think we need one more.
One more, sir. As we reflect on tonight's meeting, I'll also ask for a motion to adjourn at 8:48 PM. Okay, motion made by Frank, seconded by Maria. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If there's any opposed, now's the time. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tonight.